Good morning. Welcome to Donald Anderson, our semi-retired organist and music director who fills in for us when we need. And today, Tawana is traveling, so he is filling in, so thank you so much. I have some announcements that are not in your announcements, but please read what is in there, because there's a lot of good, important stuff in there, so please do take the time to read that. One announcement is that next week, it was dark when I came to church this morning, it was dark. Next week, Saturday night, the time changes, so that it will not be dark next Sunday morning when I come. But that does mean, you gain an hour of sleep, it's fall, spring forward, fall back, so we get to set the clocks back, and that means you get an extra hour, so yay about that. But please remember to do that, so you don't show up at the wrong time. And for those of you who are able to do this, if your schedule permits, I set mine back on Friday night before I go to bed, rather than Saturday night, so that it makes Sunday a lot easier, just to make that. Saturday is a hard day, Sunday is easier, just a thought. Gareth Kalfas, Executive Director of Chanko on James, our camping conference center at the diocese, is with us today. He will give a little presentation during our town hall, which will be between the two services, so I urge you to stay for that. We'll have an update on the Capitol Campaign and the regular stewardship drive, and we'll talk a little bit about what's been happening. If you haven't noticed, the labyrinth is laid out. I urge you to look at that, it's amazing, I'm thrilled by that. If you have any questions about that, that would be the time to talk about them. Okay, I mentioned last week that next week is the Sunday, it's the day after, but it's the Sunday we celebrate All Saints' Day. All Saints' Day is one of the four days designated as a baptism day. And I'm thrilled to say that right now, assuming nobody gets sick, we have seven children who will be baptized next Sunday at the Lundy Park service, which is just fantastic. Any church that has more baptisms than funerals is way ahead of the game. And so, yay for us. Here's the thing about baptism. Baptism is done with water, and you are baptized in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. The Trinitarian words are spoken, and that makes you baptized. In any denomination, any Christian denomination, if water is used and you are designated as baptized with the Trinitarian formula, you are baptized. So in the Episcopal Church, we don't worry that you were baptized in another Christian denomination. We're perfectly happy that you have come to find the Episcopal Church. One thing we do in the Episcopal Church, if you've seen a baptism, you've seen this, or if you were baptized in the Episcopal Church, you have this. We use a chrism oil, that is a specific oil that is blessed by the bishop, and we mark a cross on the forehead of the person who is baptized, and we use the words that "you are marked as Christ's own forever." Now, I call this the Holy Tattoo. I love to ask kids where their tattoo is. But yes, indeed, you have a holy tattoo. God can see it, and you are marked as Christ's own forever. If you are baptized in another denomination, that may not have been part of your baptism, which is fine, you're still baptized. But over the years, as I've been in different parishes, I have had people say to me, "I don't have the Holy Tattoo." So I am going to invite anyone who was baptized in another tradition that did not have the chrism and marked as Christ's own to come forward during the baptism and be marked as Christ's own forever using the bishop's blessed chrism. So if that appeals to you, plan to come to the next week's 11 o'clock service, and we will mark you as Christ's own. It's kind of sweet, just for what it's worth. Okay, I have other things to say, but we're going to say them at the town hall, so at 10 o'clock, we'll do that. So let's give it about 30 seconds, take a deep breath, be in the house of God, and we'll begin worship. Blessed be God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
In the best of his name, now and forever. Amen.
Almighty God, to you all hearts are open, all desires known, and from you no secrets are hid. Cleanse the thoughts of our hearts by the inspiration of your Holy Spirit, that we may perfectly love you and worthily magnify your holy name through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Lord, have mercy.
Praise and mercy.
Lord, have mercy. God be with you.
In us to you.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, increase in us the gifts of faith, hope, and charity, and that we may obtain what you promise, make us love what you command, through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, forever and ever.
Amen.
Please be seated.
A reading from the book of the prophet Joel. O children of Zion, be glad and rejoice in the Lord your God, for he has given the early rain for your vindication. He has poured down for you abundant rain, the early and the later rain, as before. The threshing floor shall be full of grain, the vat shall overflow with wine and oil. I will repay you for the years that the swarming locust has eaten, the hopper, the destroyer, and the cutter, my great army, which I sent against you. You shall eat in plenty and be satisfied, and praise the name of the Lord your God, who has dealt wondrously with you. And my people shall never again be put to shame. You shall know that I am in the midst of Israel, and that I am the Lord and your God, and there is no other. And my people shall never again be put to shame. Then afterward, I will pour out my spirit on all flesh. Your sons and your daughters shall prophesy. Your old men shall dream dreams, and your young men shall see visions. Even on the male and female slaves, in those days, I will pour out my spirit. I will show portents in the heavens and on the earth, blood and fire and columns of smoke. The sun shall be turned to darkness and removed to blood before the great and terrible day of the Lord comes. Then everyone who calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved. For in Mount Zion and in Jerusalem, there shall be those who escape, as the Lord has said, and among the survivors shall be those whom the Lord calls. The word of the Lord.
In his name we shout.
Our Psalm for today is Psalm 65. We will read responsibly, I have first. You are to be praised, O God in Zion.
To you shall rouse the performed Jerusalem.
To you that hear prayers shall all flesh come.
Because they are in creations.
Our sins are stronger than we are.
But you will watch their bounds.
Happy are they whom you choose and draw to your courts to dwell there.
They will be satisfied by the deed of your house, our holy and sacred temple.
Awesome things will you show us in your righteousness, O God of our salvation.
O God, the ball against the spear, and as the seas turn our power away.
You make fast the mountains by your power.
They are worthy of mountain life.
You still the roaring seas.
The roaring waves and the tender pools.
Those who dwell at the ends of the earth will tremble at your marvelous signs.
You, the God, must sing for joy.
You visit the earth and water it abundantly, you make it very plentiful.
The river cries for water.
You prepare the grain.
For sowing the vine from the earth.
You drench the furrows and smooth out the ridges.
The very rain is softened the ground, and thus its increase.
You crown the year with your goodness.
And your paths were flooded with plenty.
May the fields of the wilderness be rich for grazing.
And the hills be flooded with joy.
May the meadows cover themselves with flocks, and the valleys cloake themselves with grain.
And they shout for joy and singing.
A reader from the second letter to Timothy. I am already being poured out as a libation, and the time of my departure has come. I have fought the good fight, I have finished the race, I have kept the faith. But now, but from now on, there is reserved for me the crown of righteousness, which the Lord, the righteous judge, will give me on that day, and not only to me, but also to all who have longed for his appearing. At my first defense, no one came to my support, but all deserted me. May it not be counted against them. But the Lord stood by me and gave me strength, so that through me the message might fully be proclaimed, and all the Gentiles might hear it. So I was rescued from the lion's mouth. The Lord will rescue me from every evil attack and save me for his heavenly kingdom. To him be the glory forever and ever. Amen. The word of the Lord.
The Holy Gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ according to Luke.
according to Luke.
Jesus told his parable to some who trusted in themselves that they were righteous and regarded others with contempt. Two men went up to the temple to pray, one a Pharisee and the other a tax collector. The Pharisee, standing by himself, was praying thus: "God, I thank you that I am not like other people, thieves, rogues, adulterers, and even like this tax collector. I fast twice a week, I give a tenth of my income." But the tax collector, standing far off, would not even look up to heaven, but was beating his breast and saying, "God, be merciful to me, a sinner." I tell you, this man went down to his home justified, rather than the other. For all who exalt themselves will be humbled, but all who humble themselves will be exalted. The Gospel of the Lord.
according to Luke.
I speak to you with love for Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. There are a lot of parts of personalities that we all share because of human nature. And one of them was described in the Gospel today. One part of human nature is to compare ourselves to others. It's just something we do. Typically, like the Gospel today, we compare ourselves sort of in the present and past, rather than in the future. The tax collector is beating his breast and saying, "I'm a sinner." Whereas the Pharisee is beating his chest and saying, "Look at me, I'm terrific, I'm not like them." Man, God really doesn't want us to do this. We should not be comparing ourselves to anyone. I don't know about you, those of you who are parents, but one of my mantras for my kids is, and I've said it to them as adults, because sometimes adult children still need their mother, do not let somebody else's actions dictate your own. Do not let somebody else's actions dictate your own. Do not compare yourself to someone else and come out saying, "I'm better." That's just not who we are supposed to be. That is not who God created us to be. And yet, it is human nature to compare ourselves. So I think this parable is to remind ourselves that that is not what we are created to be. We are created to be loving, generous, kind followers of Christ. Loving, generous, kind followers of Christ. Regardless of what somebody else does, we are to be who God calls us to be. Now, we know this, and yet we still make comparisons. I had a birthday in September. I turned the age my brother was when he died. It's freaking me out. I'm going to have a whole year of being just a little off balance, because I am now the age that my brother was when he died. Comparison is natural and normal, and yet, we should do everything we can to rise above it, to be who God calls us to be, to be the kind and loving people that God showed us how to be. And in particular, to stop comparing in the present and past and look to the future. If you want to do any comparison, look to someone you admire. Obviously, the one you ought to look to is Jesus. But I am all well aware that none of us is ever going to achieve Jesus's threshold of behavior. But there are others, and we could still strive to be like Jesus. In fact, that's what he told us to do the night that he was arrested, to love each other as loved us. We can still strive to do that on a regular basis. And that is what we are called to do. So I don't have much to add to that. Short sermon this week, lucky you. There's really not much more to have to be said. We can look at ourselves on a regular basis. I don't know how you go about that, but what I do. I pray to the Lord on a regular basis, daily, in fact. Please help me to be the person you created me to be. Help me to serve others. Help me to stand up for what is right. Help me to be kind and generous in thought and deed. Help me to love each other. Help me to every person I see, see that that person is a beloved child of God, just as I am. I am not better than them, I am not less than them. I am a beloved child of God, they are a beloved child of God. Not better than me, not less than me, a beloved child of God. And if I remind myself of that every day, if I ask God to help me to be the person he created me to be, every day, then maybe it helps me actually be that person. I don't know, but I keep at it. And I forgive myself when I don't live up to it, as I know God forgives me when I don't live up to it. But I start again, and again, and again, and again. And that is what we are called to do, to love each other as he loves us, to be kind, to be generous, to see people as beloved, to do a little better today than I did yesterday. If you must compare yourself, compare yourself to yourself. Can I be better today than I was yesterday? Don't be the Pharisee, be the tax collector. Ask for God's mercy. Do better today than you did yesterday. Standing as you are able, let us say together the words of the Nicene Creed. We believe in one God, the Father, the Almighty, Maker of heaven and earth, of all that is seen and unseen. We believe in one Lord, Jesus Christ, the only Son of God, eternally begotten of the Father, God from God, light from light, true God from true God, begotten not made, of one being with the Father. Through him all things remain, for us and for our fathers. For us and for our salvation He came down from heaven. By the power of the Holy Spirit He became a carnet from the Virgin Mary and was made man. For our sake He was crucified on the Pontius Pilate; He suffered death and was buried. On the third day He rose again in accordance with the Scriptures. He ascended into heaven and asceded at the right hand of the Father. He will come again and order to judge the living and the dead, and his kingdom will have no end. We believe in the Holy Spirit, the Lord, the giver of life, who proceeds from the Father and the Son. With the Father and the Son He is worshipped and glorified; He has spoken through the prophets. We believe in one holy Catholic and apostolic Church. We acknowledge one baptism for the forgiveness of sins. We look for the resurrection of the dead and the life of the world to come. Amen." Let us cry out to God for peace and a time of healing.
For Sean, our presiding bishop, for Susan, our bishop, for our parish clergy, for this holy gathering, and for the people of God in every place. We pray for this holy gathering and for all who hear God's deeper call, especially Allison, our parishioner in training for holy orders. We pray also for the health and healing of Barbara and Linda.
Amen.
For Donald Trump, our president, Glenn Youngkin, our governor, for all those seeking elective offices, for mercy, justice, and peace among all peoples.
Amen.
For good weather, abundant fruits of the earth, and peaceful times.
Amen.
For our city and those who live in it, and for our families, companions, and those who we love.
Amen.
For orphans and widows, the sick and the suffering, travelers and strangers, and all with heavy burdens.
Amen.
For those who rest in Christ and for all the dead, we pray.
Amen.
For our deliverance from all affliction, strife, and need.
Amen.
Lifting our voices with all creation, with the blessed Virgin Mary and all the saints, let us offer ourselves and one another to the living God through Christ.
Amen.
Let us pray for our own needs and for those of others.
Amen.
God of sinners, hear the prayers we offer this day. Rescue us from the very evil, from every evil, and save us for your heavenly kingdom through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Let us confess our sins to God. God of all mercy, we confess our sins against you, opposing your will on our lives. We have denied your goodness in each other, in ourselves, and in the world you created. Your repentance for evil and enslaves us to the evil we have done and the evil done on our behalf. For revival, restore, and strengthen us, your our Savior, Jesus Christ, that we may abide in your love and serve only your will. Amen. Almighty God, have mercy on you. Forgive you all your sins through the grace of Jesus Christ, strengthen you in all goodness, and by the power of the Holy Spirit, keep you in eternal life. Amen. Peace of the Lord be always with you.
Amen.
Ascribe to the Lord the honor to his name. Bring offerings into his courts with praise and thanksgiving. The Lord be with you.
Amen.
Lift up your hearts.
Amen.
Let us give thanks to the Lord, our God.
Is franked with our thanks and grace.
It is truly right, good, and joyful to give you thanks, oh holy God, source of life and fountain of mercy. You have filled us and all creation with your blessing and fed us with your constant love. You have redeemed us in Jesus Christ and knit us into one body. Through your Spirit, you replenish us, to call us to fullness of life. Glory and honor are yours, Creator of all. Your word has never been silent. You called a people to yourself as a light to the nations. You delivered them from bondage and led them to a land of promise. Of your grace, you gave Jesus to be human, to share our life, to proclaim the coming of your holy reign, and he gave himself for us, a fragrant offering. Through Jesus Christ, our Redeemer, you have freed us from sin, brought us into your life, reconciled us to you, and restored us to the glory you intended for us. We thank you that on the night before he died for us, Jesus took bread. And when he had given thanks to you, he broke it, gave it to his disciples, and said, "Take, eat; this is my body, broken for you. Do this for the remembrance of me." After supper, Jesus took the cup of wine, said the blessing, gave it to his friends, and said, "Drink this, all of you. This cup is the new covenant in my blood, poured out for you and for all, for the forgiveness of sin. Do this for the remembrance of me." And so, all that was done for us, the cross, the tomb, the resurrection and ascension, longing for Christ's coming in glory and presenting to you these gifts your earth has formed, the human hands have made, we acclaim you, O Christ. Dying, you destroyed our death; rising, you restored our life. Christ Jesus, come in glory. Send your Holy Spirit upon us and upon these gifts of bread and wine, that they may be to us the body and blood of your Christ. Grant that we, burning with your Spirit's power, may be a people of hope, justice, and love. Giver of life, draw us together in the body of Christ, and in the fullness of time, gather us with the Blessed Virgin Mary and all your people into the joy of your true eternal home. Through Christ, and with Christ, and in Christ, by the inspiration of your Holy Spirit, we worship you, our God and Creator, in voices of unending praise. Blessing be you now and forever. Amen. And now, as our Savior Christ has taught us, we are bold to say, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the life, and the glory; for thou art in heaven. Amen." These are the gifts of God for the people of God. Take them in remembrance that Christ died for you, and feed on him in your hearts by faith with thanksgiving. Let us pray. God of all bodies, you have fed us with the blood of God and accomplished salvation. You have united us with Christ and one another. You have made us one with the older people in a unity of honor. Now set us forth in the power of your Spirit, that we may proclaim your redeeming love for the world and continue forever in the wisdom of Christ our Savior. Amen. My brothers and sisters, as you go forth this week, remember that every person you see is a beloved child of God, just as you are a beloved child of God. The blessing of God Almighty, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit be amongst you now and remain with you always. be amongst you now and remain with you always. Let us go forth to love and serve the Lord. Thanks be to God. Kiss. Down, Molly, everybody. Down, Molly, everybody. I'm off.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, if we could, let's open up with a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this gathering, thank you for this spiritual place. Lord, when we speak this morning, let us speak with love and speak with clarity. As we listen this morning, let us listen with love and a desire for understanding. Lord, bless us all as we get through this meeting and find out what's going on with your church and what more we can do. Thus we pray, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
All righty, well, welcome to our last town hall for the year. Oh, good, I was expecting applause. I'm glad we're here. Um, and welcome, but thank you for those who came and thank you for those who are hopefully online listening. I think it's important to mention before we get started the reason behind these town halls. Three years ago, when we were doing the discernment and looking for priests, part of that was doing a parish survey. And as is likely to happen anytime you survey anybody or people and ask what we can do better, one of the things on there was better communications. So in addition to reveals where information is shared every week, in addition to announcements, and here, we wanted to make sure there was an opportunity for two-way communication, in-the-moment communication. And that's why we started doing, we had done town halls before, but we decided to start doing regularly, plan on it, once a quarter kind of town hall. So I appreciate you being here and we are very sincere in that, we want to share information with you, but we also want to hear what's on your minds, your thoughts. So today's, what we have to share is modest. There's not a ton of time we're going to take on that and it's going to leave a lot of time for questions. So feel free to either ask a question about the topic that we present or any other question that's on your mind. So what we're going to do today, what we're going to cover today is, Molly's going to update us on the two campaigns that the beginning of has now ended. Trying to not sound like it's over, stop, don't send any more checks. Keep sending, keep coming. But she'll give you an update on that and then I'm going to talk just for a minute or two about what we've been doing with that money already and then what's to come. Um, and by the way, nothing that I talk about will pale in comparison, none of it pales in comparison to, if you happen to come this way and you see the work that Palmer Frazier has been doing, it is going to be glorious. So kudos to Palmer and his hard work. That is going to be something that the church and I think the community will use forever. I will tell you on a personal level, my son, who's 31, came home last night to, you know, have some laundry done and eat some free food. Uh, and we showed him that because Palmer had sent out the latest picture. And his first response, and he grew up in Redeemer, uh, his first response is when it comes to Christmas, can we go a little early because I'd like to use that? He's a very contemplative person. So, I mean, it just gives you a little snippet of what that could do. So Palmer, again, thank you. Okay, so we're going to talk about Capitol Campaign, but we're going to start off. Well, before I get to Gareth, and I'm not going to even try his last name because I'll muck it up Gareth and you're too good a man to do that, too. Um, Gareth is the Executive Director of Chanko and Chanko is placed near and dear to Redeemer Hearts. But before I do that, this is the season, please remember, this is the season for changing over vestry, for vestry nominations. So it's been in the, it's in reveals, I hope it's in the bullet, the announcements. If you have, if you would like to stand for the vestry, please reach out to us, let us know. You can reach out to Molly, you can reach out to myself, to Tara. Uh, we would love to hear from you. The vestry is your body. That's who you elect to make sure Redeemer is run the way you want it to be run. So this is your body. We want your input, we need your input. So please, if you aren't able to stand for the vestry, but you know somebody who you think would be a great candidate, reach out to them. It's just common courtesy to go to them before you start having us go to them. So go to them, see if they're willing and then give us the name and then we'll reach out to them. Okay, it's very important, we're working on it now, but we certainly want to hear from you. With that, let me turn it over to Gareth, Executive Director of Chanko.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Thank you for having me here. One of my favorite things about serving on the bishop's staff and working for our diocese is getting to be out in such beautiful churches and such beautiful neighborhoods with such beautiful people. And so it's great to be with you here today. As the Director of your Diocesan Camp and Retreat Center, I want to share just a little bit about bit about Chanko with you. We're a place of transformation, we are also a resource to the diocese, probably the only diocesan property that has a ropes course and a sailing program. And we also are an outreach of the diocese, a place where funds from our parishes and our donors go to make sure that kids from the Mission for the Holy Spirit down in Norfolk and from the Homeless Ministries and from the Boys Home have a chance to come together, be loved on, to hear God's word. We aren't just summer camp, although I do want to talk about summer camp today, but first, a lot of folks forget that we are a year-round retreat center and a place for folks of all ages. And today I want to highlight two things that are coming up in the not-too-distant future. Dan told me, I believe, that Kristin is already working on gathering up a group of youth to attend the EYC weekend in November, and that is put on by the youth leadership of the diocese. So all diocesan youth are welcome, and are glad to hear that some of the folks from Redeemer will be attending. That Sunday, which I believe is November 9th, Chanko will also be hosting an open house. So if you've got kids, or you don't have kids, and in either case, your family's not the right age for the youth retreat weekend, you can still come on out that Sunday afternoon after church, get a bratwurst, ride a hayride, do a zip line, and see a little bit about what our camp's programs are all about. I also want to highlight for you an adult program being offered this second weekend in December. Of course, that's Advent, so this would be our annual Advent retreat. I highlight this partly because I believe it'll be a great program, and Angier Brock has been well-received when she's run our retreats in the past, but also just to remind you again, Chanko really is a place for all ages. Of course, most of you, or many of you are specifically familiar with summer camp, so I'd like to say a word about that today. Our summer camp program has a curriculum that is created by the Diocesan Office in, um, in partnership with Christian Formation folks from some of our parishes. This past summer's theme was, "You Are Loved, Pass It On." And what a perfect sermon we heard Molly say today, or some of you might be about to hear her give today, God's love really is at the core of our faith as Episcopalians and what we want our kids at camp to hear about. Love is one of our three core values, right along with friendship and with spirit. And so this summer, as with every summer, the kids came into the chapel, into the Spirit Center before they went off to their activities for daily morning worship. They heard the gospel, they saw a presentation or heard a presentation from their own peers on that reading, and we got to hear about that message, "You Are Loved, Pass It On." And we celebrated one of our great traditions, which is, "Yea, God, and Jesus Christ, Superstars." These are where we first sing our, or say our gratitudes to God for where we've seen God acting in the world. And this might be as simple as, Mary shared a kind word with me, and then we all say, "Oh, she was a superstar." Or it might be, "God, you let it be sunny today so that we could go sailing, you gave us good weather." And whenever we say our "Yea, God," somebody will say, "I saw God acting this way," and then we all go, "Yea, God." So I know sometimes Episcopalians aren't participatory, but I'm gonna try. So, today we had beautiful weather for the drive into church, and we all said, "Yea, God." That's good. Or again, the Jesus Christ Superstars, this is where we say that I saw somebody acting Christ-like, or I saw Christ through so-and-so's actions. So that might be, for example, to Tara for welcoming me and setting up my visit, and then we will all raise our jazz hands, go, "Superstars." You guys were very kind to be participatory, and I appreciate it. We have a lot going on this coming summer, starting with open houses in November and March. We have a winter camp on Martin Luther King Weekend for ages seven through 12, and then a full slate of camp sessions for kids ages seven through 16. At age 17, your kids are eligible to come work in our intern program, 18 and up, full summer jobs, counselors, lifeguards, ropes facilitators, et cetera. Lot of great things going on, I hope that I see plenty of your kids there. And some of you are saying, "I don't have any kids that age." Well, that means you have a wonderful opportunity to sponsor other campers, whether it's a camper for your own parish that has a little need, or whether it be one of those campers from the Boys Home or the Homeless Ministry, et cetera. I don't want to take up all the time, but I'll be around during coffee hour for questions. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Gareth, I really appreciate that. I'm just gonna add a word that, um, I'm not exaggerating when I say, I think 100%, I'm gonna give it at least 95% of all the priests I know, the Episcopal priests I know who are 50 and younger, came through their own Diocesan Camp and Conference Center. This is where people have grown up and experienced the love of God and in the surrounding of God, and so it's really a very special thing. Those of you who know me know that outdoor life is not my choice, and yet even though I can appreciate how beautiful it is, uh, at Chanko on the James, it's really, it's really special. So I urge you to consider it either for your own retreats, um, or for helping children go there. So, thank you, Gareth, and "Yea, God." Um, I want to give a short update for our two campaigns, um, the Capitol Campaign being the biggest one that we have been talking about, um, for, for months now, longer than that actually. Um, and I want to, first of all, say a huge thank you to everybody who has made a, a commitment to give to the, to the parish on this Capitol Campaign. It is a three-year commitment, although if you, I've had several people say to me, "Well, do I have to wait all three years, or can I just go ahead and pay it?" Please, go ahead, 'cause the sooner we have cash in hand, the sooner we can do things, and that's what Dan's gonna talk about in a minute. So, um, please go ahead and consider making your, uh, your donation sooner, if, if you're able to do that. We set a very lofty goal of $1,400,000. Right at the moment, as of this morning, with 126 donors, um, we have commitments of $1,309,000 and change. So, nearly 94%. I will say, and I'm thrilled about this, uh, of those 126 donors, um, many of them are making their first in-writing donation, um, or a commitment to Redeemer, and I'm really thrilled. Some folks who have been givers for a long time, but just never actually put it in writing, and it's really helpful when it's in writing and we know, um, who, who made commitments. So that's awesome. Last year, for 2025, for this year's budget, we had 150-something, 157, I think, um, in-writing commitments. So that's 30 folks that haven't yet committed, who committed last year. I think out of 30 folks, we could get to another $94,000, what do you think? Here's hoping. So if you haven't yet made a commitment, please consider doing so. Um, for the, for the 2026 stewardship drive, and I'm very intentionally using different words so that you understand the difference, the Capitol Campaign is to fix our building and pay off our mortgages. The stewardship drive is what keeps the lights on all year long and pays for programs. Um, we're really, we really need $600,000. That, with $600,000, we have a very bare-bones budget, very bare-bones. Um, in fact, we may not replace some personnel without that, even with that, we may not replace some personnel. It's a very bare-bones budget, we really need $600,000. Right now, with 120 commitments, we have, um, 84% of that, or $503,000. So, yay! But if you have not yet committed, please considering, please consider letting us know. And again, we really need to have that, if at all possible, even if you are a giver and you just feel like, "Oh, they know I give." It's hard to make plans on that, so if you would make a commitment to us in writing, that would be very helpful. That's what I have.
Y'all know I love to digress. Go back to Chanko. For any parent especially, I appreciate others can participate with Chanko as well. Um, you know, I go back to when I was young, I was, grew up a Baptist, and we had what was referred to as royal ambassadors, it's like the Baptist way of having scouts. And we had a camp, and I just did not want to go, did not want to go. And my mother, who was my spiritual guide, just did everything but kick me and force me to go. The night I'm leaving, um, from camp, cried like a baby. Um, it was just a wonderful experience. Fast forward however many years, um, Alex, who again, my son who grew up here, was not, he, he was, he's an introvert like his father by nature. Um, it's true. Um, he went to, but, but, but willing to experience things, and he went to Chanko. And it just, he loved it. Once, once he went the first time, would not miss, and he ended up developing lots of friendships, including a young lady who he ended up either taking to prom or taking to some big dance, and she didn't live in Richmond. We had to go meet her parents in Weavisburg, I think, to do a handoff so she could go. But that was all, um, because of Chanko. So if you have a child, and your child tends to be a little withdrawn and not proud of, I tell you, if they go once, you'll never have to push them to go a second time, so please consider that, it is a blessing, uh, and I thank Gareth for coming. Um, so, fantastic news, I was talking about to Lou before, and I told him I don't even have the latest number, and that latest number is very, very good. So as y'all probably know, I'm working with a team, uh, that is charged with figuring out how we spend, uh, the money to get the best return for Redeemer. And we've shared with you in the past, and if you go over to, right before you go to Pender Hall, there's a wall and there's a wonderful depiction, uh, graphic showing uh, the different phases, uh, the different priority levels. It's all needed, but there are some things that are needed more than others. Um, and so I just wanted to let you know, we can't do much, as Molly said, pledges are wonderful, and we thank you for that. We can't really do much with pledges, we need the cash in hand. So we are somewhat waiting, but in the interim, we have done some stuff. So I first bring your attention, when you come in this morning, I'm sure you came in one or two doors. If you notice, the door on the left, you now can't see out of before you open it. It actually is solid at the bottom. You can't, uh, uh, before a small child could have crawled in if they wanted to, it was rotten to the core. Now we've got replaced doors, okay? Um, when we did a, uh, the building inspection a couple years ago, we knew the foundation was in trouble. It hasn't been completely finished, but between Mike Webb and his own industrious good work, and contractors we brought in, we're close to having the foundation fixed.
Of the office.
Of, of the office, yeah. Yes, just under the office. We had already had a vapor repair, or put in some other things, but we're about finished on that. Soon, we're going to begin work on some of the brickwork. There is four of our stoops that are in desperate need of repair. The poster child is outside the lobby. Did I hit that right, Mary? You can teach old dog new tricks. The lobby outside of, of parish, I mean, it's just, it's a hazard. And so we're going to have that fixed, and there's three other stoops, and then there's a railing on the front of the church that's on one of the stoops that's incredibly wobbling. So we're gonna fix all that, that's in the works, that's being, uh, being worked on. Gutters, um, we have as a high priority gutters, but higher than high is gutters around the office, because we continue to have water problems with the foundation because of lack of gutters. So we went, we decided we're gonna do that first, we started to do the gutters, and then realized the fascia that the gutters have to attach to are all rotted. So now we brought somebody in, they replaced the fascias, primed them, ready to go, we are now going to put gutters on there, 'cause we want to make sure the foundation, the area under the foundation, the crawl space, does not become a swimming pool again as it has in the past. Uh, the last thing we're working on now, and this, no one here probably even knows it exists, but we've got some drop-down ladders that go up into the attic that, like other things in this church, are not commercial-grade. They're kind of what you would use in your home, and yet those ladders are used in some cases to take up equipment, like HVAC equipment, and they're falling, they're 30 years old in some cases, so we are replacing those, and that's a, a job that Mike is also participating in to help lower the cost. So we are having a professional help, uh, on at least one of them, because it's a two, absolutely a two-man job. But all of those, and they were all relatively small things, something that we can fit within the funds that are on hand. But what we're excited to do is to get started with the meaningful. So the first thing that is the absolute top priority is the roof. We have got contractors picked, we have an RFP, thank you Rick Mauer, we have an RFP written, um, RFP stands for Request for Proposal. So it's a written document that tells any supplier exactly what it is we're looking for, so that when we get the prices in, we are comparing apples to apples. Uh, so we've got the RFP written, I mean, we literally are ready to go, once we have the cash in hand, we will go out on that. On this, uh, the next one is siding, uh, window repair and painting, which we're looking at exterior, which we are looking at as one bundle, because we're going to have stuff that comes up that we don't know about until we're there trying to paint and realize, here's a section that we thought was good that's not. So we've got five vendors that we have approached, we've done the initial consultations with, the initial interviews, they're ready to go and give us a final bid. But that, we have to wait again until we have the funds in hand. So the other thing that may come about is the nave is high on our priority list. So we have had one of our vendors who had gave us an initial bid that's very, very good, who's offered us an additional discount on interior painting if it can be done during the winter, keep his crews busy, and this is substantial discount, tens of thousands of dollars. We would very much like to take him up on that, but that's gotta come after we've done the roof. So again, let me just double up on what, um, Molly said, the earlier we get the funds, the better, 'cause then we can start with this action. So we're excited about where we are in the program, uh, we're excited to hear this last number, which takes us really, really close. Uh, but please, the sooner we get those in, the faster we can go. I think that's all I have on that topic. Just wait. So, yeah, if it was anybody but Carrie Sue, I wouldn't have done that. Um, so now, I would like to open the floor for, for questions, but I would ask, it looks like, it looks like we've, we've had a great upgrade from Steve to Tricia, uh, so I would ask you, because sometimes people can't hear. So I would ask you because sometimes people can't hear here and we got folks online. So I will point out the question, so I'll ignore people who I don't want to answer their questions. When I point to you or say your name, Tricia will bring you that thing, the microphone. So.
Carrie Sue.
Carrie Sue.
Okay, hello. My question is, I know that there are, I heard back when I was on the Vestry, that some of the infrastructure for elevators is in place in the building but was not completed. And I was just curious if that's going to be something we think about doing just for accessibility or no? I see the floor.
The answer, so for anybody who didn't hear, it's about the elevator. A, I shouldn't say the, that makes it sound like it's planned, a elevator. It's something the building sorely lacks. It is something that breaks my heart when I realize that we have potential parishioners and in the future may have parishioners who had, who couldn't access upstairs if they wanted to. It is something we've talked about. We've gotten a preliminary number. It, the number is high enough that it did not hit the first priority, second priority. But let me share with you. The number would be best case scenario, $80,000. Worst case scenario, a quarter of a million. And what the differentiator is, if you don't know, I'll give you more information than you asked for, which is never a good thing to do when you're in this thing. You never give more information. But what the heck, I'm only doing this job for a couple more months. Fire me. We have heard, rumor is, the closet right outside in the, what's that called, Narthex? In the Narthex, I got two of them right, Mary. There's a, there's a thing that we use for the food closet. That was, we hear that was initially thought of and designed to potentially be an elevator shaft. If that's true and if the foundation was truly designed, then you could be looking at the 80,000 somewhere in that neighborhood. But it's all about the foundation and whether the foundation was done correctly. If it's not, then you're looking at more like a quarter of a million. But we did think about that. Okay, Caroline Head.
I'm piggybacking on Carrie Sue Casey. I remember there was a discussion about the elevator in my presence. And we were told that we were grandfathered in with ADA compliance. And if we put in an elevator, then it would cost a lot to update the building to total ADA compliance. Can you speak to that?
Yes, that, when you do that level of work, you probably would be. So two things on that. Number one, we should be ADA compliant. But number two, we would have to go find out what that entails when we're doing that number. So even if it's 80,000, the, the work being done, it may, costs a quarter of a million to do everything else. So two things, as we do our due diligence, if we have the money for this to go on the priority list, first thing is to find out, is the foundation actually set up for it? Number two would be to figure out what all would be required. There's a whole lot of things. Eric Fraser, when he was working on the parking lot, had to be careful that we did not increase the size of the parking lot more than so much because then we'd have to bring the, you know, warrant, make a change and you have to get everything ADA compliant. But wouldn't it be nice, by the way, if you want to increase your pledge and give even more, wouldn't it be nice if we could become ADA compliant everywhere? I mean, we had a parishioner, I don't know if he's still coming, John or Joe, that was in a wheelchair and it just broke my heart that if he wanted to go upstairs, he couldn't. But good point, Caroline. Other ques, oh my goodness. Yes, ma'am.
Since you're talking about how much we have on hand in these priorities that are the next couple of months, if we're talking about a winter discount, can you tell us approximately how much we do have on hand and what that number would be to hit the roof and the painting and the interior painting?
I can tell, I'll tell you the second part of the question and Molly might be able to tell you the first part of the question. To do the, to do the two, it's basically, let's call it $300,000. The roof's about 150 and the painting, exterior and interior together, is about 150. So call it 300, maybe 350. Oh, Mr. Collado. Oh, this is when I get nervous.
You had said we would save a substantial amount of money if we could utilize the painting contractor in the winter. What would, what's the dollar?
15%. Yeah, so call it, you know, $30,000. More than we wanted. And by the way, let me, again, I'm just going to be transparent. Doing the parish hall, painting the parish hall was a third phase, nave kind of first But this would, I, we will be meeting my team, the team, not my team, our team will be meeting in a couple of weeks. I think it's likely we may agree, let's move it from the third phase to the first phase if we can save 10% of doing the parish hall and do that at the same time. What's that? 40, it seems to, I can't remember for sure. I didn't break. I got a new printer, finally got it to work and printed it out and forgot to bring it. I'm old, forgetful, what are you going to do? Okay, yes, sir. Mrs. Cunningham.
I'd like to know, is paying off the mortgage, which, which my understanding is that's going to come out of the capital campaign funds to pay off the mortgage?
That was one of the priorities.
Is, is that a priority in terms of doing that first because it, our annual stewardship campaign is contingent? In other words, was the money to pay our mortgage payments generally coming from our annual stewardship money? So do we have to do that first because we planned our stu, our annual stewardship campaign with the assumption that we were paying the mortgage off?
Let me answer that and give you some additional information. We've got two, two mortgages, if you will. Second mortgage, we took out to finish the parking lot. If you remember, we had a generous, wildly generous donation from a parishioner for the parking lot, which paid for close to half of it. We took out a loan because we did not want to lose those monies. That is in priority level three, two? Two. So that one, yes, we want to pay that off. We're paying six and three quarters percent interest. The mortgage mortgage, the first mortgage, that's in the last, that's, we, I think we said priority four, that's just because you didn't want to skip and put priority 26. Because it's three and a half percent interest. If we had the money, we wouldn't pay off the mortgage. We would put it in the bank, earn more than three and a half percent and go from there. So the mortgage is not as pressing. We desperately want to pay off the six and three quarter because you're right, each month we're paying interest on that and that comes out of the operating. Okay, Carrie Sue for those at home.
So I know that Reds contributes to the church's budget in some way. I don't remember what the details are because it's different from when I was on the Vestry. But my question is, are we extending the capital campaign or the stewardship campaign to that community or do the contributions that they already make or the percentage they make flow into this somehow?
Really good question. Reds did contribute. In fact, they were one of the first contributors to the capital campaign. And second of all, because it is a good question, for this next school year, their contribution is $70,000. That includes what they give us to, you know, for lights and that kind of stuff. It includes their portion of Kristen's salary. It includes their portion of the insurance and their portion of the cleaning of the church. But it's total at 70,000. Yes, Mr. Adams?
I have a comment as opposed to a question. Some of us are required to take money out of their retirement plans. I will be next year. So I have a very smart nephew who's only 10 years younger than me, who has both a law degree, a master's in law and an MBA from University of North Carolina. And I work with him as his financial advisor. And every time something happens like Brexit, he panics and takes money out of the market and then he puts it back in and this and that and the other. So the, the bottom line of that whole thing, he says, the first thing I learned in MBA school is you can't time the market. So the bottom line of that is that market's pretty high. It's at an all time high. The Dow hit an all time high on Friday. We're not to the end of the year yet, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to take my 2026 pledge and pay it all the first week in January. So that means that it's A, coming out of my retirement plan, so I pay no tax on it, goes to the church tax rate. And then B, they have the money in January. So I'm just saying that since you can't time the market and the market is really pretty high now, if that is your vehicle to pay your pledge to capital campaign, please consider doing that because it serves two purposes. Money is available to fix the roof in January, to paint, save the $30,000, and you might have hit the high of the market.
Thank you. Beautiful thing. Surround yourself with people smarter than you are. It's always a good thing. Other questions? Now we're here for the other Cunningham.
Has anything been going on relative to trying to replace the associate rector?
You want me to answer it? I can answer this one. No. And part of that's intentional, to be honest with you, part of it, and this was Molly, not me, but you know, we're giving the budget a little bit of a break. Because we are a little bit, this year, we're not quite where we need it to be. So Molly immediately said, we're going to hold off. So the intent's not this year, we're not looking, but next year, we will, we will do this. And let me assure you, I have actually heard from a couple of parishioners concerned about Molly and burnout and not putting too much on her. So first of all, thank you. If you, if you're one of the ones who came to me, thank you. If you're the one, one of the ones who's been thanking it but hasn't come around to see me, thank you. I will assure you, Molly and I meet every week and one of the discussion points is always about how she's doing. And Molly, if you, if you've, if you've heard her preach, you know preaching is just one of those gifts that God gave her like he didn't give very many people. She can preach and I swear, I think she could preach with five minutes notice and you'd still be going, darn, wasn't that, felt like she was talking to me personally. We're, there are things that she's talked about and things that she's going to reach out to people. There are other things that are part, that fall in line with pastoral stuff that she can, we can let laypeople do. And she's all over that. She's already talked to people, she's working on that. So one of the things that, one of the responsibilities of the Vestry is to make sure she's got all the support she needs to make sure she doesn't burn out. We want to keep her for a very, very, very long time. Yes?
This goes back to Carrie Sue's comment about Reds and their contribution. And I'm assuming this is so, but was information about the capital campaign sent to each of the parents of students of Reds? Because many of them are not parishioners, but yet they are, they benefit from the building and the school and everything.
Did you set this up? Yes. Every parent of Reds child received a stewardship camp, I mean, a capital campaign pledge. Yes. And we received, didn't we receive, hey, we received one at least. Oy. But we, yes, so we did. Other questions? Y'all are asking really good questions. Hang on a second.
I have more of a statement. I really found enlightening what Richard just said about, we always think of doing our RMD, our required minimum distribution at the end of the year, but Richard hit the point of you could do it in January for 2026. And we have a pretty small audience now, so I would like to ask Molly to consider maybe having Richard make that kind of presentation after 11 o'clock service in November.
It's a great idea. Thank you. Yeah.
I am far too young to know anything about RMD. I am! Other questions? Gosh, I got to tell you, every single question was brilliant. I appreciate it. I appreciate y'all. 1.3 million. We're not quite there, but that's nothing to sneeze at, right? That is wonderful. We're going to be able to do so much to get this church back in the condition we all wanted to. Your stewardship pledges will help us to keep it in that shape, okay? Because we're going to have to repaint the building again. We need to be putting money aside to paint it five years down the road. So please, those who haven't entered stewardship yet, please do.
I want to say two things. One, does, anybody have any questions for Palmer about the labyrinth? Palmer, when is it going to be finished, finished?
So we are having our, sorry. So this weekend, obviously the labyrinth was laid out, painted out so that way next weekend and November 15th and 16th, when the scouts come and hopefully some church parishioners to help actually lay the stones down, that will make that process easier. So hopefully by November 16th, everything is done, the area sawed it back over and the labyrinth is ready to go.
If y'all haven't been out there yet, join me. So.
Yes, I'll be talking with Molly about having a dedication ceremony once it is finished.
Yeah. Well, we'll figure out a good date to do that. One other thing, I just want to, this is, you should hear what I hear sometimes. We had the burial service for Molton, his first, John, John Molton, who was the third rector of the parish. And I say burial because he didn't want a full funeral. We did sort of a full funeral out at the, out at the memorial garden and, and, and interred his ashes. His daughters who grew up here, at the end of the service said, could we maybe ring the bell? Because when they grew up here, we could ring the bell. And I had to say, no, I'm so sorry, but it is not safe to ring the bell. The issue for that is that the structure that holds the bell in place is damaged to the point that it is unsafe to ring the bell. I don't understand this. The, the sort of estimate that we've had to fix that is like $25,000, which blows my mind. But it's part of our whole thing. Wouldn't it be nice to be able to ring the bell? So just, just put that in your mind. Yeah, but it is unsafe to ring the bell, Tricia.
The word is that you may not yet walk on the labyrinth.
Oh, yes, please, it's, it's, it's taped. Don't walk on it, just admire from the edge. Yeah. All right. Anything else from anybody? All right. Thank you so much. Those of you who are staying from the 10 o'clock, you have 15 minutes and you could go get off.